Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, August 16th, Special City Council meeting of the City of Delaware Beach. Please, go on in your comfortable positions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all due respect, under each, under God, we did this all with the integrity and justice of all.
I have my personal role.
Councilmember Robinaki.
Yes.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Right.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notera.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swob.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
Good, thank you. Does the record reflect that Councilmembers told us during telephonic call?
Ladies and gentlemen, um, we've got a mask. And the reason why we're wearing masks is that we had a house meeting for four days at the, uh, League Cities Annual Convention. And there was a variety of meetings with hundreds of people from across the state, various cities, and apparently one person tested positive for COVID. They didn't tell us who that person was or whether he was personally exposed to him or not, um, but in accordance with caution following the CBC guidelines, which call for social distancing, um, a mask, and, um, the old procedure test, I'm pretty sure that I dealt upon it. And I, um, was fully vaccinated back then, so I think I've been pretty good. The doctor's not in the S, I'll take that as a good sign. My other doctor, which has a physical tomorrow, wants to see me, so I don't think he's too worried either, so, um, but just so you know, that's why I'm doing this. So you might want to stay a little longer if you're in a dangerous place.
All right, item one, request authorization for the city manager to advertise for legal services for the city attorney. Description here, the city council consensus at the budget workshop to advertise a request for proposals, that was last month's budget workshop, and August 2nd, 2021 consensus council to discuss of all seven councilmembers present. First, motion please. Sum of, Dave Gaddis motion, second?
Check it.
Second by Rita Swob, only Dave Gaddis.
Uh, yes, I, uh, I think that looking at other options is always the best answer for the city, and, uh, I recommend that we be prepared.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, down the floor.
Okay, um, as we did when we had the city attorney Marino, we didn't want any open, uh, end-in contract, but once again, we have that, that's why I pointed this out, and we need to do the same thing that might need to be consistent, the same thing we did with Marino, when he was our attorney, he put it out for RFP. We advised him that he could certainly apply, of which Vice Mayor Gaddis did that during the work session for, uh, city attorney Riley. And councilmember Banker had pointed out at the time about his billing, and yes, I look at the bills too, and there's sometimes there's charges on there for specific things and sometimes there isn't, but I am concerned about the June billing, and there was a call on June 8th around 3:46 PM between Mayor Manzo and the city attorney that is not noted on here. I don't know if it was an oversight by the city attorney and that he needs to amend this bill to charge for that call or not charge for it, one or the other, but with that said, I still feel like we need to go out for an RFP, and he can certainly put in his request, and then we can look at it again.
Um, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did listen to it in its entirety. Um, I will vote against this because I think Fred Riley has done a fabulous job under horrible circumstances. I don't think this is necessary at this time. Marino was, uh, a lawyer for the city for like 15 years. How long have you been doing it, Fred? Couple years?
Two.
Two? Less than two, so I don't think that's an appropriate time to go ahead and ask for an RFP. As far as the billing, I can tell you that I think that it should be higher. I think that he is underbilling when he probably should be billing more. There wasn't a call on there that was, well, it's probably because he didn't charge for it, so maybe we shouldn't bring it up so he doesn't amend it and get more money. So if you're worried about saving money, maybe not bring that up. Um, yeah, this seems, this seems very unnecessary and very, and I don't know why, and it seems certain councilmembers, we definitely have a divide in the council, I can see that on many issues. Um, I disagree with this, and going back to when we did RFP, we had the other people, just to remind everybody and to point out to Frank since he wasn't there, the other firms, wonderful firms that came, they gave us their newly graduated junior lawyer who doesn't have any experience, and they were going to get their experience with us. Or we could have had a well-seasoned attorney who's been in practice for over 30 years and already has this position at another city, so knows what he's doing. So, again, to go back to a medical term, do you want the brand-new graduate surgeon operating on you? Would you rather be 30-year-old better, you know? So, I mean, it's one of those things. So, as far as price, I don't think this council, as of right now, needs to talk about that because if you do or nitpicking about money, well, then go take that off that $30,000 sign, we disagree. Like that wave, that $5,000 wave, that would have been money that we could have put towards, oh, sorry, $4,000, sorry, but pennies difference, my bad. Um, so I'm strongly against this. I wasn't at the last meeting, I wish I was, that way we wouldn't even have to do this today because it would have been voted out.
I'd just like to say what Councilwoman Swob said, there are things that he doesn't charge us for. I dealt with attorneys the last 20 years of my working career. This man's not even doing it for two years, I believe he said. No disrespect, but he gets rid of a car, only two years, brand-new. This guy's still getting his feet wet, in my opinion. I mean, no disrespect there either, but he's a great attorney, I'll tell you, the facts, you might not like them, but that's what attorney does, you know? And most people hate attorneys, no disrespect, they have your free attorneys here, until you need one, and then you appreciate it. I think Mr. Riley's a great attorney, I hope he stays.
I'm gonna echo what Dr. Akki and Frank Banker said. Um, first off, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, okay? Fred has done fine jobs here in the city under, uh, pretty difficult circumstances. A lot of other attorneys would probably have said, forget it, I don't need this. Um, yeah, Dr. Akki brings up an excellent point. We were given the junior league with some of these other places. Instead, we get an experienced attorney who jumps in here, cleans up what's pretty much a mess that had been allowed to perpetuate for decades in this city, um, does it pour us a ridiculously low rate, okay? So we use the medical analogy, not only are we saying, let's get rid of this surgeon who's gonna find a job, um, he's not only gonna find a job, he's done it at a incredible price. I'm looking at the last thing he sent us here, and we're gonna talk about it in the next meeting, and he says, although I will include a time entry for drafting this provision, I will not charge the city for this task. Why not? You helped change an ordinance, an ordinance that has real problems, as you're gonna see in a little while. It deserves to be paid for that, and it deserves to be paid more than $125 an hour. That is a unbelievably fair price. If anybody thinks that we're gonna lower legal bills, do you remind people, for years, no legal work is really being done here. A lot of rubber stamping was being done, but real legal work, going in, delving into our ordinances, review of our city charter, getting involved in all these new areas that this council and the previous council have both been done. And kudos to both of those councils for doing it, but we need legal, and all these committees and new things that we've done. Fred Riley's recent resignation, he's gonna find out he's an ethical attorney. By the way, we'll investigate some of those attorneys that applied. It had been, they had cases where they were, they lost actions that were taken in boards because they violated sunshine law. One of them has three violations. Pretty pathetic, Fred Riley doesn't have any violations. So, I'm totally behind you, I know you had announced your resignation, and I'm asking you, Leslie Notera, I know the last time she kind of got the ball rolling in what I thought was one of her finest moments, I, I hope you will stay. I, I really would like to continue to work with you, and I will support you. I will have to vote for this only if you tell us that you're not going to stay because I must have city attorney, but if you wish to stay, my vote will be no. Any other councilmembers?
Uh, I have a question for city manager Reeves. Uh, Mr. Reeves, do you have any other attorneys lined up for this?
Yes, I, I mentioned that at the last meeting, I, I, you know, three, how, three proposals.
Three, three, okay. All right, so, uh, if we accept Mr. Riley's resignation, we definitely have legal counseling, is that correct?
Yes, we just have to select firm and law.
All right, thank you.
And where are the three attorneys that you contacted?
Uh, Brian Miller Olive.
Speak into the mic as I can't hear you.
Brian Miller Olive, Salzman, and Trastagenon.
So Trastagenon?
Yes.
That would be the one that has the three sunshine violations in the Delaware Beach. Go look at the actions by Mr. William Gay. And I think there was a fourth one pending up in, um, Dunedin, and I don't know if we, I didn't look that, we'll have to see what the result was. Three sunshine violations. If that's what you want in your city, vote yes for this. I have one on council before I leave this up to the citizens, yes, one, Glenn.
I just have a question. I, uh, previously you had submitted a resignation order, has that been withdrawn pending this? Or, I mean, what, I'm trying to establish the chicken and the egg here.
I did submit a resignation letter, um, I put the, when I sent it, it was the date was, resignation date was the 19th, because that was the 30 days after the last meeting. I did not want to leave the city without counsel for an extended period of time, so I, in the last meeting, said I would stay at least through the first meeting in September so that you would have a chance to address this issue.
But, or, the possibility of you pulling your resignation and staying is possible if we convince you.
Well, I'll, I'll say a few comments if, if, when it's time for me to make some comments.
I'm gonna just ask if there's any other council comments, and then I'd like to turn toward you. Any other council comments, Leslie? I've not spoken, you should speak.
I, I have one more comment.
Sure.
Uh, I think it would be irresponsible, this council, not to move forward with this, uh, with this proposal, mainly because we have, uh, we have a resignation from Fred Riley, we have to have coverage.
Is there any other council comments?
Well, that, that said, okay, he did give us a pretty clear path, he had support, he was gonna stay. I think it would be derelict in our duties if we passed this, and then we have to bring in these three attorney firms, debate these three guys, see if we can find an attorney firm. How long will that take? We're in the middle of a budget right now, where are you gonna find an attorney, okay, that knows our budget like he does?
We're not gonna vote on it until we hear from Mr. Riley. He has this, his, he's, he's, he tendered a resignation, he extended it last time through the first meeting, which takes us into September 6th or 7th, even though he was hired, which is ethically the proper thing to do, and he's, he's doing that, and he's being very generous and even offering to stay. He could have very well said to stay with his original date, that would not be an effort fraught to say, I gave you a month, and he didn't, that's what he's been important part to do. If he wishes to withdraw this tonight, then we'll still vote on this, okay? Um, but, I, I think, I've already said I'm gonna vote, and so it looks like everyone else has too, so, um, it's really up to him, but he's, Mr. Riley, I mean, you know, I think the role of him, but if you decide that you are going to keep the resignation in, uh, effect, I can see there being nothing other than unanimous vote, because as Vice Mayor Gaddis correctly stated, and as I said before him, the same thing, we must have a city attorney, and I would have no choice but to vote to allow the city manager to go out and find a replacement. That is not something I'm gonna do voluntarily, so, Robin Akki, then one more.
Just one more comment, since I was at the last meeting, I'm gonna publicly ask you to please rescind your resignation and stay because the city is much better off with you than without you.
Mr. Riley, I have the ability to call on you to speak, and at this point, I'm gonna do that.
Okay, first, I'll start with a correction. Um, my rate is not 125, it's 150.
Okay.
So, I understand, correct me, for, for normal, general things, it's 180 for litigation, which there's not very much of that I have involved with. So that, that's the first thing. Second thing is clarification. Um, Robin was not here the, the last meeting, but at the last meeting, there were three people that asked me to reconsider, so that's what I did, and as I understand it, I've talked to her since, she, she's asking me to reconsider, so as I understand it now, there are four people that would like me to reconsider and to stay on. What I had proposed last meeting was for a way forward so that if y'all, um, had time to consider it and wanted to change your mind on anything, you could do that, and I would be flexible enough, and I still will be flexible enough, to not leave the city without an attorney for a period of time. I, I don't know what could be any more fair or professional than, than doing that. At the, the last meeting, I, I asked, um, that y'all simply decide, I mean, if you're, if it's time to make a change, then do it professionally, tell me it's time to make a change, and I will facilitate the city making a change, and I will not cause a, any trouble in doing that. That's the professional, responsible thing for me to do. Um, having said that, I, I don't think, as a council, y'all, as a group, quite understand some of the things that, that I actually do, and I do them because I'm supposed to represent the entire council, not one person, not a group of two or three, it's the entire council, and at times, that's been very difficult. That's not a new phenomenon, I've talked about that briefly before. I, I wish y'all would put your differences aside, and, you know, that's, that would be what happens going forward, that, I, I will tell you, go, me going forward based on four people want me to, to stay, and three, um, ready to make a change is, is far from an ideal situation for me, and I, I will readily acknowledge it. So, I, I basically will ask a question, and I'll make one more comment before I do, but I, I really don't enjoy sitting here being the, you know, the topic of discussion. All I wanted to do, and I, I told you all this when I interviewed for the job, I will do my role, and I do, will do my role ethically, and I will do my role within the parameters that I'm supposed to do it, and I will sit here and look each one of you in the eye and tell you I have done just that. So, my, my question to the, the group of seven is, if y'all want to make a change, please tell me you wanna make a change, and I will tell you when, 30 days from now, I will, uh, will be my final day, and if you want me to stay longer to facilitate somebody new, I will certainly be receptive to doing that, but if, if more, if four of you want me to leave, have the professionalism to tell me that. And if, if you don't, you want me to stay, that's fine, I would like to stay, and I would like to continue on, and I would hope that some of the conflict somehow, um, gets resolved. So that's my question, and that's my request.
Going back to Rita's comment about the, um, the bill, I just thought of a comparison. If you go to your doctor's office twice a week from a month and see them and get care, you can't get mad when you get the doctor bill. You're using the services, you get the bill. So I don't think we should be up in arms about his bills and direct that anger towards the money we're spending towards him when he's, it's not his fault, we should be looking at ourselves, and why are we using the lawyer so much? So you're blaming him for our actions, and that's not fair. Second of all, I will say, I, I want you to stay, so that's one move, I want you to stay, and I would even maybe, maybe propose to give another chance until March, the new election, things may change up here, that may change some of the friction, and maybe consider staying on until March, until the next election, when maybe people will change, some people may not run, some people may not win, I don't know. So that's my only other common, maybe temporary fix to the situation, and, and trust me, if I was you, I'd probably run screaming from this place. I don't understand how you've dealt with all of us for so long, so I commend you for your patience, your professionalism, and, I mean, I don't think people realize that when he's giving you an answer, he's giving you the answer. You may not like the answer, but that's not because he doesn't like you, it's because that's the answer. So if you don't like what answers you're getting, you're getting from them, maybe you're asking the wrong questions, so, that's all I'm gonna have to say. So, you got me in your corner, hoping that you reconsider and you stay at least maybe till March, and, and who knows, it may not be all, so.
I would like to go again and comment again as well.
Down the floor.
Um, I was basically mentioning on the June 8th bill, that there was a call made that wasn't on there with a charge or without a charge. I did not know if the city attorney inadvertently left off that call and that we should have to have an amended bill. It wasn't about going to a doctor and then him billing me or anything like that, yeah, I mean, just making sure that he didn't inadvertently leave off a call that he made that should have been charged for or even no charge. On that same month's bill, there's calls on there or activities that the city attorney did with no charge, that one was not there. That was my point, it only my point. It wasn't stated that anything about his dollar amount, total dollar amount of bill or anything about going to a doctor, so I just wanted to make sure it's very clear on that.
Hmm. I'm an attorney, as everyone knows, I practice and I bill people, and I can't believe that we even hear questions about your bill. First off, your bill is eminently fair. You've given more free time to this city than it deserves, you don't have to give it any free time. Now, none of the attorneys wants to give us free time. I'll tell you what, in 15 years of practice, I've seen, if I count on one hand, any of the attorneys I ever saw give any free time. And that meant if you were talking about the baseball game, you were paying $400 an hour, and if you were talking about constitutional, you were paying $400 an hour. You're very fair with what you do, and I don't think you should have to be scrutinized on a monthly basis when you're talking to your client. Your client is the seven of us, city manager, city clerk, and this city, that's your client, you've sent out multiple things about this. Some of us have more questions about legal, some of us may have a heads-up on something that we give you. And we shouldn't feel guilty about approaching you, and you shouldn't feel guilty about giving us advice. I have called you at all kinds of hours in the day and night, sometimes when an emergency arises, to give you a heads-up. That is my job, that is what I'm supposed to be doing. I don't get paid a nickel for it. I've lost hundreds of hours, the hundreds of dollars, talking to you for the good of this city. My God, you should be allowed to charge for that. You did work on ordinances, you should be allowed to charge for it. And I don't like any pressure being put on you, any attorney, and I don't care who follows or, you know, 10 attorneys down the road, and you're billing us fairly. You're most definitely billing us fairly. I wanna talk about your legal advice that you've given us. You have given spot-on legal advice, and sometimes it's not easy. I just approached you, this, this, people in this meeting, with a split. I've got, I, I spoke to a mayor at the convention who's in a neighboring city, and an attorney that I think everybody thinks is a pretty decent attorney, and they have a different opinion on something we're doing. You quickly recalled what you had done and the research you did, and I think you came to the right decision, and I'm sticking with your decision. I think the other town has it wrong. You researched some very complex issues for us, stuff that's never been touched in 20 years, you've done it. I don't think you need to change after 20 years. The other situation was 20 years of continual redoing of a contract, and when I came in and some other people came in, we saw that city attorney, oh, maybe at some point was doing a good job, and I didn't think at that point at the end was up to date on all of our laws, and voila, we're changing side ordinances and everything else that were probably not constitutional. If you have an unconstitutional law, it could be in litigation for years, it's no good. You've kept us out of that. And let's talk about timing, because they say in the world, timing is everything. I couldn't possibly think of a worse time to change city attorneys than what this city is facing right now. This is the wrong time. You're not gonna get anyone better, you're not gonna get anyone less. And ask yourself if you're voting Fred Riley out because you really think that's what's good for the city, or are you doing it for a different reason? I don't see how anyone could answer that this is good for the city at this point in time, six months from now, probably a year or two years down the road, no. You don't go testing the water with your city attorney, uh, if he's doing a good job or she's doing a good job. You have my total support, and for any reason you don't want her coming back here, I will give you a recommendation anytime, for what it's worth, you have my total support as mayor, as attorney. You're an excellent attorney, I would be honored if you would continue with our town, so I ask you to please reconsider. Yes, sir.
Well, I wanna address the point Rita has raised, and you, you have your approach to things, I have mine. I have no problem whatsoever addressing any question related to the bill. I'm not insulted, I'm not, um, anything other than I, I want, I, I go through in detail it the way that I do, and I've always done this because I think the client needs to know what I'm doing, who I was doing it with, what was involved, and how long it took. And when I interviewed for this job, I said I would do it down to the minute, not down to the six minutes or not down to the quarter hour, some attorneys do it that way. I told you all I would do it to the minute, and I've done that. If there's ever a question about the bill, I'm happy to address it. If there's any reason that I should, um, you know, modify it, if somebody proposes that, I would consider it. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I'm going to do it, but I would, would at least consider it. I've tried to be fair, I've tried to be professional about it, and I have also, as a matter of course, for a long, long period of time, um, detailed bills and put the task I took, and if there was a reason that I, uh, thought that I shouldn't charge as much time, I put how much time it actually took, and then I've charged something less. I mean, there's times I, I don't, maybe I shouldn't feel guilty, but if you're on hold for 20 minutes, which is a common thing now, if you call somebody, I don't really feel like I can charge the client 20 minutes when I'm on hold listening to the same song 500 times. So, you know, I, I've tried to be precise about it, and I, I'm, I'm not offended if somebody has a question about the bill. Some of the things I wish I didn't have to spend time on, I'll be quite honest with you, but I, I have, uh, you know, there's two attorneys on the council, y'all know as well as I do, that ethically you have to do things, and you have to be thorough about doing the ethical stuff, and I've been thorough about doing that, and unfortunately, some of those things take a little time to sort through, so that's, you know, unfortunately, that's what I've had to do on occasion, so, that, that's where I stand. I hope that's a good clarification for Rita and others.
Counsel? Moving up to the citizens then, if they would like to speak, please come up here. Uh, I don't know if the mic is on, but if it's not lit, up there, you just push a button, just give us your name and, uh, address, and just come up.
Thanks, sir. Check, check. Is it on? Nope. Okay, Richard Haggerty, 119 Ninth Street. Uh, sir, we don't, we've not formally met, uh, so I don't know, um, him personally, but, uh, I'm not a lawyer, but I will say I do know a little something about selfless service, and I, I really just wanna recognize you because you, obviously, as I, I sit in the back of, uh, these meetings, you're in a very polarized situation, and certainly nothing is easy, I'm beyond these meetings, behind these meetings, so, really, I just wanted to, I guess, on behalf of myself, my, my wife, and my dog, say that as a citizen- I'm beyond these meetings, behind these meetings. So really, I just wanted to, I guess, on behalf of myself, my, my wife and my dog, say that as citizens, I don't know if the dog counts, but as citizens, uh, we, our family appreciates that you gutted out and tried to deal with this. Again, very difficult, uh, situation. Uh, I'd ask the council, I have a technical question, I'm looking for an answer because obviously I'm not privy to all of the inner workings and meetings and conferences. But it, it seems odd, and this is the first time I've heard anything, that there may be a concern over performance or billing or ethics or advice or anything of this gentleman's performance. If we are, we are as a group voting him out based on the first sign or the first issue of, of problems. Now, again, I don't really want to get into that, um, argument. I would just say that it's, it would be unique to try to replace somebody if we didn't at least try to as an organization. If there are issues, sit down, discuss them, and maybe try to find if there's a better way to do things moving forward. I don't really, uh, have not spent any time, um, with the law, but I can tell you the last 12 months, just moving here, um, I've spent a lot more time with the law. So, uh, your maneuvering between all the Bel Air Shore and everything else is been noble. And I just want to say thank you. And, um, and my house at least supports you. Anything worthwhile is never easy. And I say that again as someone who's spent a couple of years in the selfless service business. So thank you.
Thank you.
John Hanzig, 22nd Street. I've expressed on more than one occasion, um, my gratitude to Mr. Riley, one on one. And so I won't belabor that. What I'd like to say is, I'm a taxpayer. This council works for me and every other taxpayer in this city. There's an underlying current in this current council that in my opinion is undermining the forward progress we're trying to accomplish in this city. And now it's gotten to this. I missed the July meeting because I was on vacation, and that's when this all started. And apparently, based on the resignation letter, Mr. Riley, certain words and how they were used in their context is what prompted him to make this resignation. I've attended most, every council meeting and many of the work sessions. Mr. Riley epitomizes professionalism. And it's true, most people don't like lawyers. I have extreme respect for this gentleman. And the fact that he's not billing astronomical fees or whatever. So I'm gonna concur with a couple of members who have spoken hour and say, you need to retain Mr. Riley as the city attorney. You're in the process of a budget session. I'm assuming we're using private counsel for the, uh, the lawsuit. And I'm sure Mr. Riley's somehow gonna wind up being involved in it. Real intelligent decision to change horses midstream. Just remember, you work for us, the taxpayers. You should not have a personal agenda serving this city. And if that's the problem, as was said at last meeting, if that's a real problem and you can't look yourself in the, self in the mirror and say you don't have a personal problem, you need to step down. You need to step down now. Because I'm over this. Really over this. I'm gonna have two opportunities to convey my opinion. One is here, one's at the ballot box. And I guarantee I come to you, I don't miss an opportunity to vote. I defended that for 24 years. You will not take that away from me. I will remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanzig. Citizens, anyone else? Take it back to the council. Any further comments?
I have, uh, one more comment. Uh, whenever we were interviewing attorneys, uh, I was, uh, one of the two people that did not vote for Fred Riley. Uh, if I had to face that decision again, I would not do it. I, I'm sorry, I, I just, I, I thought that we could do better. And, um, I still stand behind that. But it's nothing personal, it's just that's the way I feel.
I'm done.
I think with each and every council member in this room says they make a decision based on what they believe is best for the city and all the residents. I take that at face value because I think they do that. Whatever their reasons are, I think at the end of the day, they are making a decision based on what they think is best for the city, Miller Beach, and the residents. I think everybody who's come to this job is risen above the personal thing. And although maybe something brought them initially to the council, they have figured out there are other things that are above and beyond that personal agenda. And at the end of the day, it's what's best for the city and for the residents. So, my conscience is clear. I, I, I take, I'm a little exceptional to anybody stepping up and saying, we make decisions based on personal things. Well, no, at the end of the day, what brought us to the job was making good, solid, rational decisions for the good of the city and for the residents. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Riley, I just came back from five days at convention. And it wasn't sitting out at the pool, because there was no pool. The pool was destroyed, they were building it. It wasn't, it was a have fun thing. Working 7:30 in the morning, and you know how much I'm an early morning person, for 5:30, 6:30 at night, seminar after seminar. Vice Mayor Glenn has been to these, he knows what they're all about, okay? One of the things, and I'm not gonna sit and do a recitation of everything that I learned, but I learned quite a bit. And one of the things that stick in my mind was, they said, when you go and when you've been elected, and remember, they come to all the elected officials in Florida, they come to this, and they said, people in the city put you there to use your experience and your talents for the good of your city. Lord knows we all on this council give our time for this city, okay? We don't get paid. I don't know if people realize that, but, um, we give our time freely because we want to help the city. And I'm gonna use my experience, I'm gonna use my legal experience. And I've seen a lot of good lawyers in today, and I've seen a lot of bad ones. You're an excellent one. And I don't throw that compliment around. Please ask some of the people I've been against. I don't say that about everybody, I don't, okay? It would not be a good decision, in my opinion, vote for a movie at this point in time. Not just now, not six months from now. I see no reason to do it at all. You've not given me a reason. Oh, I may not like that you don't always side with me, as Frank Banker said. I'm gonna give us information sometimes that we don't like. I have to deal with clients who want to go and rob the bank. No, you can't do that. They don't want to hear that, okay? Well, I gotta tell you, you can't do it. Or I gotta tell you, your case isn't as strong as it is. You give it to us straight. You give it to us in a very calm and rational manner, which sometimes this council can use. I'm as guilty as anyone else, temporarily clear here. You know, Dr. Rocky always seemed to keep us grounded. I don't want to know what it would be like if some attorney would be screaming and yelling. But if you want to know what it's like, go watch the videos from two years ago. Go watch it. And John Hanzig is laughing. I remember that John Hanzig being disrespected. See that hat that man's learned? That's Master Chief of the Navy. He fought so that we could be doing this. And that other guy who was talking about the service, that's Colonel Richard Hagerty. I salute him every time he comes here. That's a leader of men. So these people that are standing in your corner, telling you how much they respect you, take the backgrounds that they bring and the experience that they bring when you make your decision that I'm gonna ask you to make in a few minutes if you're gonna stay on for us. Because I value everyone's opinion. But when I hear those people talk to our citizens, yeah, I know I'm making the right decision. I'm with you. Council members, if there's no other comments, I'm gonna ask Mr. Riley point blank if you're gonna stay with us here and then we will poll the question who will vote on this.
Well, last, at the last meeting, one of the comments I made was, I had listened to the tape and I could count. And if you can count, then you can tell whether the House supported or not. Uh, subsequent to the, the meeting that I wasn't present at, I had four people that asked me to reconsider and express an interest in having me stay. And I would like to do that, but you, but it's up to y'all. If, if you don't want me to, then don't, then vote for the RFP and that'll be it. And then the next question is, when, when should I depart? When would that be best for the city? It's that simple.
So if this motion fails, you will stay on then for us. And we send your, uh, retract your resignation notice.
I intend to. I would, responding to what Robin asked, I, I wouldn't do it for six months. I would do, want to do another year contract. That's certainty for me. Although, if, if, you know, there's a provision that gives either party 30 days if something happens and, um, I'm in a powerball three months from now, then I probably won't feel as inclined to stay. Or if something goes drastically wrong and y'all want to make the change, you can do that. The, the, again, I'm talking to the council as a whole, and two of you are lawyers. Lawyers are supposed to make it easy for the client to change if the client has a desire to change lawyers. And I've tried to do that. So, to answer your question directly, if four of you want me to stay, I will stay. And I will hope things will go better.
Thank you. And thank you for reconsidering. You didn't even have to do that for us. I'm done.
I'm, I'm still a little vague. It's not clear by mind. Did you, was your resignation letter conditional? I don't remember reading anything in there, conditional. It just said, "This date, I am going to provide services up until this date to provide interim coverage for the city." But I don't remember reading any terms.
No, it was, it was not conditional at all. It was definitive. And I got to the meeting and, uh, three people had asked me to stay. And one of them, uh, an additional person was not present. And as I said last at the meeting, uh, two weeks ago, um, I have not, um, presumed to know exactly where she would come down. I thought that was a better decision for her to make, and she wasn't there to make it. I thought that was only fair too.
No, I, I think the council's giving you an awful opportunity to say, I withdraw my resignation letter. So if you don't say forthright, I'm, I'm withdrawing my resignation letter, and there's no conditions in the resignation letter, then my question is, does it still stand or doesn't it? It's A or B.
I'll, I'll withdraw my resignation letter. And if y'all vote, uh, four to three to put out an RFP, then tomorrow you'll be getting a new resignation letter. So how's that for clarity?
That's, that's the clarity I sought, thank you.
If there are any other council comments, Dave Gaddis, you got the last word with your motion. If there are other council comments, I'll go to Dave to last word.
All I'm going to do is ask you nicely and respectfully to reconsider because you know this council is broken. And I'm afraid you're gonna get pulled into something that you're not gonna wanna, you're not gonna wanna be part of. So, might not be a bad idea to save yourself while you can.
I'll go back to you. I'm not gonna take that as last word, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the, uh, city attorney the option to.
I, I find that to be one of the most astounding comments that have been made to me in 35 years.
And let me explain myself. Basically, I feel that this is a toxic environment. And I'm afraid that you're going to get swayed one direction or the other. And then someone's gonna take you down the wrong path. And that's all I'm gonna say. That is not a threat. What that is, is I, I feel bad for you, that you have to work in this environment.
I'm gonna have your other friend now, if you can. Can I go?
Well, I, I appreciate you looking out for me, and I, I say that with all sincerity. Like, again, the, I, I have repeatedly referred to a rule that the Florida bar has for representing the organization. And I have repeatedly, uh, referenced that in, in various situations that we've dealt with. And I have, uh, done everything I could to make sure that I was following that rule. And, I mean, obviously, you know something that I probably don't. But, I mean, the, the, the easy thing, believe me, for, for me to do is to walk away from this situation. And that, I could, I could have done that six months into the job. And I considered doing it six months into the job. But I committed to doing the job, and I have remained on, and I've done my level best to try and work with everybody. So, I, I'm, again, astounded with the comment because, I, I mean, I, I defy somebody to find something that I have done ethically improperly because I haven't. I've gone to extraordinary lengths to do things the appropriate way. And I, I would have hoped several of y'all would have recognized that. But, you know, I, I, I don't know what to say to that comment. I'm, I'm, again, astounded.
Well, I've knocked you down for that.
I kind of know what to say. Um, to me, that sounded like a threat, whether you want to call it or not. I somehow don't feel like you have his person, like you're worried about him personally. I think that's a veiled passive aggressive attempt of hiding what you're trying to say, which I don't think is a threat. I would also say that this man has a lot of integrity to not be swayed. And maybe some other people on this council don't have their own personal integrity where they may themselves be able to be swayed. But I do not see that in Fred Riley. I think no matter what you do, he's gonna tell you the truth, whether you like the truth or you don't. And I don't care if you think he's your friend or not. If you're wrong, he's gonna tell you wrong. And I have 100% confidence in him. So I, I'm also astounded by your comment. And honestly, I'm offended for Fred that you made that.
Well, I'd like to respond to that. I'm gonna go to Frank Banker and come back to you. I'll go through another round with council, then Dave will come back to you first and then next to you. Sure. You had two, and Frank said a couple, so let's have Frank and anyone else.
I, I, I missed the work session in July, and I had poor hearing. I didn't know what I was clearly, clearly voting on. I got his resignation, I emailed him right away, and I apologized. I voted for that. Now, I've only been on council since March. With Mr. Gaddis's comments, what skeletons are in the closet that I don't know about? Because it sounds like there's a bomb ready to go off that Mr. Riley's involved in. Um, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's a pretty astounding words that you made there. I mean, whoever sits in that chair is gonna be liable for something. That's what attorneys do. But with the comment that you made, Mr. Gaddis, I just don't know where that's coming from.
Mr. Riley, before I go back to, and I want to see if there's any other council comments, Dave will come back to you, and then it's round you first, okay? There's two questions directed at you, and I want you to frame your response. But let's go, but you want me to hear them all? I want to be disciplined too. Mr. Riley, I'm an attorney. I'm insulted by that comment that I was sitting with the seat right now. Question your ability to represent the client. We've sent out multiple emails on this, which is the bar rule, okay? Um, it is beyond the power, okay? You have never once, in my opinion, showed anyone on this council any favoritism. You've told it like it is. There is law, there is my research, there is my legal advice. Some people have taken your legal advice, some people have declined your legal advice. Another thing I learned in the meeting, and I learned this first time I went, and they said it again, it hasn't changed in two years. You're safe when you take your city attorney's advice. 34-hour ethics course that we. Thirty-four-hour ethics course that we must take, clearly, over and over and over again. Talk to your city attorney, talk to your city attorney, talk to your city attorney if you got a question. Your city attorney may not always tell you, "Hey, what you wanna do is gonna apply the ethics rules or what have you." But Riley has told me things that I'm like, "Really?" Man, I don't like that. I don't like it, but that was his take party. I believe you will take no sides in anything other than the client's side, which is the city of Bella Beach. I have zero doubt that you can ethically separate your responsibilities. And friendship with an individual, or liking or disliking an individual shouldn't change your legal viewpoint and advice. One iota, and I have never seen that happen. For anyone who thinks that there is an ethics problem, the Florida Bar has multiple safeguards in place on that. For anybody who would do that, who would get their first base with Fred Riley, you're wasting your paper and stamp. Fred, I'm behind you one-hundred percent. My apologies if that insulted you. I said, "Well, I have Dave, come back to you next round."
Basically, to clarify, I have watched for the last two years you get beat up over and over by one person on this council. You've been corrected over and over and over. I can't tell you how many times you've presented us with your work, your hard-earned labor, and then you're sent back to do it a second, third, and fourth time because it didn't please a higher rule of law than what you offer. I also see that you're doing a lot of personal work right now. Basically, a certain council member is directing you to do research that may not necessarily be in the best interest of the city. I'm not really sure where it's going, but what I can tell you is that it looks to me as if you are possibly getting into that gray area where maybe not your behavior is questionable, but the orders that you're having to take are. And I don't have any problem with you personally, Mr. Riley. I think that you've done the best for the circumstances you've been given. However, where we are right now, and everything that's going on, I think that we weren't given clear instructions. You were asked a certain night to explain exactly what it was that we were doing wrong, and you failed to do that. And now here we are. And I lost confidence in your work effective that night. So, again, it's nothing personal, but I just, I no longer have confidence in your work, and I would prefer that we move forward with the RFP. And I respectfully ask you to consider not retracting your resignation. And that's it, I'm done.
We passed law here, folks. Who's gonna go next? I've got Robin Akki next. We passed law here. Our job is to pass the best law we possibly can. Mr. Riley makes up a proposed law. It's our job as a council. We hone that law, test that law, and ensure that what we pass is a proper, fair, constitutional law. Because if you don't do that, problems can be enormous. Now, I've heard people on the internet, "Just pass it." There are defendants in lawsuits right now. That's not the way we run a city, as they told me when I went to the meeting, that you all paid for. I'm bringing back my knowledge here. Use the knowledge you have to help your city. How many times have we heard Frank, our newest member, talking about his vast construction experience on certain things? He gives an insight to it. Each person has separate insight in their areas. Mine happens to be law. And I'm gonna attack the hell out of any law that he passed to make sure it's fair, and it's gonna pass muster. Better I attack it than some attorney attacks it in a federal lawsuit. Now, we get to the real heart of what this is about. Mr. Bankard looked at me, and he thought about, that he didn't give clear direction. I'm not gonna talk about the detail, but I'm gonna talk about the date. The date was July, I believe, sixth or seventh, two thousand, uh, what, twenty? Go watch the tape, folks. It's a long conference. It's in the middle. And you'll hear direction given multiple times, clearly. Listen to it. It's out there. And you'll hear the city attorney say, "Don't do this." And certain people did it. Now, the city's facing the worst. He gave the right answer. It's on that tape. Go watch it. Again, Frank Bankard said it last week. You don't like the answer yet, but the opt answer was given. It's there. Go watch it. Frank Bankard, Robin Akki. And then, I'm sorry, Glenn Gunn, Frank Bankard, Robin Akki.
Mr. Chair, if we have meant to prescribe protocol, I respectfully request we just call the question.
Okay, so we have motion to call the question. I looked this one up, because I thought you might do this. I need a second. Second. No debate. Patty. Patty. I need a roll call vote to call the question at this point. This is only to call the question. Roll call vote by individual, or by yes vote will get us to call the question immediately. Or continue debate, or no, continues the debate.
Mayor, can I just verify that Councilmember Swob is still on the phone? Because I can't see it from here.
Is Ms. Swob, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Can you hear us clearly?
Yes, clearly.
Okay, there is a vote to call the question at this point. Madam Carter, please.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Bankard?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Mantum?
No. Need two-thirds vote? You have seven people. Two-thirds of seven is what? Five, I believe, to a drawing, right? Help me out here, folks. In a long five days. Two-thirds of seven is five.
Four point six, that means five. Motion fails, debate continues. I'm done, and we have Frank, I think, it was Frank and then Ryan, right? Frank?
Well, the last time I looked at the calendar, it was two thousand twenty-one. If you're referring to July of two thousand twenty, and is that correct, Mr. Gaddis?
I don't know what specific date it is.
Well, are you saying that you lost confidence in me back in July? Last year, or is it last year?
I'm saying that a certain question was asked, and the answer was unclear. And basically, that's not the first time that's happened. Many more times, the mayor has answered those questions.
Well, if you lost confidence in the mayor, you have the right to not vote for him, okay? But if you lost confidence in the city attorney a year ago, then why did you put this thing in motion then to get rid of him, and not till now?
I do not have to answer that.
All right, well, I'm just saying, that's my question.
And Frank, there, he declined it, and you don't, you're supposed to have a cross.
Well, that's my question.
You can, and you're rhetorical, that's fine. Robin Akki, do you have anything else?
Point of order, we've already called the question and voted on it.
We have not, council member. The calling the question failed, so the debate continues. Robin Akki, you have the floor.
I was going to say that regarding what he said about the unclear, my thing is, if something's unclear, ask for clarification. If you were unclear about it before you voted, you shouldn't have voted until you were clear. And if this information was unclear, then maybe, or whatever, if his answer was unclear to you, and unclear to everybody, then it maybe should've been a seven-zero vote, because we all got the same information. So, again, I think this goes back to personal feelings, personal involvement in litigation. And I think, from what Glenn was saying, and what people out there are saying, we need to focus on the city, not ourselves. If some of these votes that I voted, if I was just going about me, I probably wouldn't have voted the way I did. But I listened to my constituents, as we all said we would, and did what's best for them. So, again, if something's not clear, how many times have I been like, "I'm sorry, can, I'm not a lawyer, can you explain this?" You know, I'm fully able to say that. So, if something's not clear, ask for more information until it is clear. So, you can't go back. Your vote, you own it. You can't say, "Well, I didn't understand it. Sorry." You should've said something before you voted. So, I don't think that's a good excuse. I can't say, "Oh, I cut the wrong artery, I didn't understand the textbook." That's not gonna fly in court, I'm just saying.
Two things. Frank Bankard, not helping me get new votes, I'm not gonna put you on my reelection again. No, I'm just playing with it. But to the point, not sure about something? You're not sure about the city attorney's advice? Tell you something that we've done here many times. John Hanzig has seen this happen, because he comes every council meeting. You table the motion, you don't go ahead with it. You know, I just saw something on TV, and it's sad. It's not funny, because this was real, and the guy died. And they were bungee jumping off a bridge. You thought that the guy said it was time to go. It wasn't, and then look them up again, and jump right off the bridge, okay? Like, ask, okay? Hey, I'm not clear. I want a memo, I want a legal memo from you, Mr. Riley, or I want some research. Because we're not clear here. We're in some gray area, I'm not getting the right vibes, let's table this thing. You're done, and then put it back, and then vote on it, and make an intelligent decision. And that's if it was not clear. So, that's the way you handle it when there's not clarity. We have the right to understand the legal advice, and I think Fred is usually very clear with it. But in his defense, and in any other city attorney's defense, I was, although you can't talk to a city attorney in advance, well, that's what city attorneys like. They don't like to be blindsided. They like to know, you know what? We got a problem here. Take a look at such-and-such in relation to what's coming up on our agenda tonight. There's no city attorney in the world who can throw legal questions and get instant answers. There's none in the world. And if you're looking for that person, they don't exist as city attorneys, they don't exist as criminal defense attorneys, they don't exist as litigation attorneys, they just don't exist. The law encompasses libraries and volumes of information. And even sometimes you spread news, and you go in and start a search, and you get, "It just came up with something today." And one city's attorney's telling them one thing, and one city's attorney's saying another one. But I have confidence in Fred, because I remember he could take a few attorneys, and I would agree. I'm gonna stick with him. The other city didn't even read the charter. I'm going with Fred. And you? Anyone else? City attorney?
I'd like to say a couple different things. And I'm trying to say it in the most professional way I possibly can. This has been a city council that has had a divide, and it has been difficult working with a city council that is divided. And, but the good Lord knows, I have tried. And I have spent the time doing the job. I have to tell you, the job is far different than what I thought it would be. I thought it would be a job where I would be writing ordinances, resolutions, and reviewing contracts, and coming to meetings to ensure there was due process. That's what I thought this job was going to be. It has been something far different. Dave, I have to say, I am still just absolutely taken back with your comment because I try to temper my personal feelings about things. But that, how am I supposed to function in this type of environment? And I have a group that is, has conflict over every single thing that comes down the pipe. And, you know, I could take that as a threat, the way that you stated it. I don't know, at times, I should take things the way they're said. And why should I continue in a position, and maybe that's the reason to say it, but why should I continue trying to do this job under the circumstances that I have right now? I'm not getting paid a fortune to do it. I mean, this is, whether y'all realize it or not, I have done the job that y'all really need somebody to do. The one job I have not done is I have not been the referee fighting between the different factions that are fighting with each other. I have not done that. I told you upfront I wouldn't do that, because that's not my role. I can't counsel the whole seven, group of seven people if I'm taking sides. And I try not to take sides. I think the biggest problem I have is some of y'all have a perception that I'm taking sides. I have gone to tremendous lengths not to take sides, and to do my job. And for me to have done professionally what I've done here, and to be sitting here and getting what I think anybody would perceive as a threat is just absolutely off-the-charts amazing to me. So, I guess I need a, I'm gonna ask the chairman for a five-minute recess, because I'm gonna decide what I'm going to do. Because I, in many ways, I'm inclined not to go forward working with this group of people under these circumstances. Because it's really not fair to me to do that.
Mr. Riley, I don't want you to think that I'm threatening you. What I'm trying to do is tell you that you're putting yourself in an environment that is basically because of everything that's going on. I'm not allowed to discuss it. I'm not allowed to discuss it. I can't get my reasoning out of where I'm.
Well, I wish you'd take me in on the air, and then explain it to me.
Well, here's what we're gonna do. Let's take a break. Gentlemen.
That's fine.
Here's what we're gonna do. Leslie Terrell, Heather Danda, I'm here for her, and I'm gonna call that, well, we'll ask to be in German for everybody to read, I'm sure they will. Leslie hasn't said much, and I'm not gonna tell you what she has to say.
I think it's me.
Leslie, into the mic, I can't hear you.
I think it's becoming very obvious what Mr. Hanzig said, that the underlying current in the city council is destroying our city. And this is evidence of it. I agree with Robin's comment earlier that if you're going to preside, wait till after the next election, things may change. The whole council may change, the underlying incivility, the divisiveness within the council may surely change. And that would be my hope for what we do.
Robin Akki.
He asked a rhetorical question, "Why should I stay on the job?" Because that threat was by one person. There are seven of us total, and four of us truly believe in you, and I think the other three do, or other two do as well on the level. But majority totally believes in you, and don't let one person, one threat sway you. Because this isn't a council, a dictator, where one person gets to say it. It's seven votes. So, don't let one person's opinion or statements sway you, and there's definitely four people that have you in the highest regards, and believe in you, and want you to stay on. Not only, but also citizens. And I've never, from any citizen I've ever talked to, ever heard one bad day. And if anything, I've heard, "Wow, that's tough for him." Like, you have no idea. You have no idea how tough it is. And nor do you need a referee. I've had a step up, you know, Gaddis has stepped up, too, and done court orders to stop fights just because, you know, things get crazy. So, no, you shouldn't have to referee. The only thing in time you should stop it is if we're getting into some legal area where it needs to be stopped. But otherwise, no, you're not supposed to referee. I have a bag of popcorn ready, and just watch the show. and just watch the show. So, that's why you should stay. For me, for Frank, for Joe, and for Leslie, who truly believe in you.
Sir Riley, you asked for a brief adjournment. It's 7:10 right now. I don't want to give you just five minutes. I'd like to give you 20 minutes so that you can deliberate. If you want to speak with Mr. Gaddis or anyone else, of course, I'm just going to say it. You all must be mindful of the Florida sunshine rule so that there's, you know, we're speaking to Fred, but he's the intermediary, so we can't be commenting on what somebody else said. But Fred, certainly, is the conference room open? Can you make it open? He'll make it open, and you can hold court in there. I'm gonna ask for a 20-minute adjournment first. Motion, please. Motion made by Frank Bankard. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Do you just hope I didn't hear?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, Patty? Or adjourned until 7:20, uh, 7:30? Hello, everyone. It's 7:47. We're back on the record. I allowed the conversation. Let council now go on. I felt it was productive. The gentlemen were in there for a while. And I wanted whatever was being said to be said, and at least get the opinions out of it. So, the council was, Patty, and our citizens were understanding of that. So, we're down, opening back up for discussion. Fred Riley?
Well, Dave can make a comment if he'd like. But him and I had a very thorough conversation about things. And I think I have a better understanding of where he was coming from. And I hope he has a better understanding where I was coming from. I, for a thousand percent clarity, there was no threat directed to me, and I am content with it.